Good morning. Call to order the October 6, 2020 meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
I ask that please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and on items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Good morning, commissioners. I am here to share a few words about Judy Larson who passed away a couple of weeks ago. So I will just read my little statement and there, what I'll be reading are quotes from people that had something to say about their memories of her. But first, Judy Larson passed away on September 20 at the age of 71. She was born in Lindesburg. She attended Rutgers University in New Jersey. And as you know, she was an active citizen in our local government for many years. It seemed fitting to Saline County Citizens for Responsible Government that we honor her life and mark her passing by sharing some comments from some of her friends and acquaintances in the city and county commission public forums. So the first quote, "I knew her from her involvement during the Drive for Five campaign. She was a spunky one, not at all afraid to stand up to the bullies. I admired that about her. And after her car wreck, she had such a tough recovery, but she got her behind there, out there, and walked and worked hard to bounce back. I should be half as tough as that lady was. Judy was quick-witted and would not stand for others being mistreated. For example, she once said during the contentious health department issue, 'My cat, Greta, would make a better commissioner to than you.'" And I say that, she said that to no one who is currently seated. And she said that not to be mean, but because she wanted the commission to be better. Judy was smart and funny and always encouraged us to do better. Her presence has been missed and will be missed in the future, a real loss of a good-hearted person. I used to be her caregiver. She was a joy and often had a sweet and kind of ordinary look about her. She enjoyed staying busy at the nurses' station filing paperwork. She was also good about looking after her roommate to make sure she was well taken care of. We'll miss her. Judy Larson's sharp humor imprinted on me the day I met her. She was eccentric, fiercely passionate, intelligent, and kind. Every conversation I had with her was a mixture of smiles and laughter, coupled with politics and the never-ending need for community innovation. Most of us know how much she loved cats, but she also loved baseball and she adored Elvis Presley. She was lucky enough to meet Elvis, and I never got tired of hearing the story. Judy was unconventional, colorful, and unique, and was sometimes harshly judged by the people around her. But those are the qualities I loved most about her. She responded to those people with a joke and a smile. And I knew she was stronger than we all realized. In a world that is becoming more and more divisive, people like Judy are becoming more valuable than ever. My interactions with her changed who I am and how I see people. Although the world seems a little less colorful without her in it, we are all a little brighter on the inside from having met her." And lastly, in Judy's honor, we ask everyone to vote. Early in office voting starts October 19. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for today's consent agenda, which provides of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda. Does any commissioner wish to approve, amend, or suspend anything? That having not been said, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move to action items. Item number one.
Resolution 20-2297, review of Section 6, the mask mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
There we go. So this is our two-week update since, in the national update, since September 21, the United States has seen an additional 609,658 cases as well as an additional, or 10,278 At state level, Kansas has seen an additional 8,749 cases in the last two weeks, 330 hospitalizations, 106 deaths have been recorded, but 47,666 negative tests in the last two weeks. Saline County-wise, we have had quite an increase. So in the last two weeks, we've had an additional 184 cases reported, which put us yesterday at 846 total cases since the beginning. However, you know, we've had 617 that have recovered, no change in the deaths since our last update. And right now, we have 218 active cases that we are following, and many of those will probably reach that recovered status here in this next week as well. The census data is about the same, definitely in the single digits, which is good. So even though we have had a lot of cases, you know, some of the bad stuff that can come from it as far as hospitalizations and deaths has still mercifully remained low. For our county, according to KDHE's website, we have had 6,316 people tested with 5,506 negative results. One thing that that doesn't include quite yet is that all of the nursing homes have had to do routine testing now, a corp, since the ruling came out from CMS, Center for Medicare and Medicaid Study, or Services, that requires all of them that are certified by Medicare to do testing. And they've been doing testing, some of them twice a week. And so KDHE, I believe, has developed a portal which should be active now or this week that all of those negative results that they have recorded will then be uploaded into. And so I expect in the next couple of weeks, we'll see some, probably some significant changes in those numbers as far as number tested and then number of negative results. Our case counts. So if you look at September, to say it's been a busy month would be an understatement. We had about 300 cases in September alone. About 60 of those, though, were due to staff and residents at nursing homes that tested positive due to the new CMS testing. And for the month of September, though, we only had, I shouldn't say only, but we had two deaths for September. We started off October pretty busy. Friday, October 2, has been our highest single date of cases since this started, where we had 30 cases reported on, by end of day Friday. And even though based off of when we turn in numbers for our press releases and other things like that, we still have cases that come pouring in even after those numbers are tabulated because there's a, you know, because of the timeline to get that stuff together, to get it for press release, to get everything else updated. And so a lot of that had just continued to pour in after. But you can see, you know, we have days where it's single digits and then, like the day before, there was only four, and then the next day, there was 30. And so we really don't know, you know, what we're going to have that day as far as caseload and workload until we're in it and it's coming. So I did want to talk a little bit about, some follow-up on the questions about testing that were asked last week, specifically to the couple of examples that were asked. So there were some questions about the Riley County drive-through testing. And so I looked into that, and Riley County Health Department shares a building with Conza Prairie Community Health Center, which is a federally qualified health center, pretty much like Salina family is. And Conza Prairie runs the, provides the staffing to do the testing, and then either bills insurance, or if they don't have insurance, they either use some other funds or another way to be able to pay for the test. There's still a screening process. You have to be symptomatic before you can get tested. I asked again yesterday to KDHE about the unified COVID-19 testing strategy that the governor had mentioned in her press conference last week. And that is not a document that has been finalized or published yet. So we are still waiting on that to see exactly what this, this strategy looks like and how it will affect Saline County. We've been asked about the rapid testing in Great Bend. So a little more research into that is that it is, again, that's conducted by an urgent care in Great Bend. The same thing as most of these others, you still have to either fill out a questionnaire, do a telephonic evaluation, and then they will determine whether you can do, whether it's, one, to be tested, and, two, whether it's the regular PCR that may take three to five days or so to get back, or whether they'll do the rapid PCR test. And the billing is essentially pretty much the same. They'll bill insurance, and if they don't have insurance, they will, they've got some other fund or avenue that they use to try and cover that cost. Testing, of course, is just going to get more complex as we move into flu season. I know that there is some manufacturers right now who are trying to develop some dual testing platforms that will test for influenza A and B and for COVID at the same time, but they are still in development. And most of the testing cartridges or kits are still in somewhat short supply, depending on what manufacturer makes your testing machine. And quite frankly, we at the Health Department, I don't have the capacity to try and run testing right now. Most of our, our staff time is focused on the case investigations and contact tracing just to keep up with that. Even with the additional staff that we have hired, as you can see, with 65 cases over the weekend, and currently staff working six days a week in various schedules just to keep up, that to try and add a, a testing strategy into that right now that we would have, that we would be trying to do on our own is not quite possible. So a little bit about where to get tested, and this is why it's important, especially if you have multiple symptoms, to be evaluated by a primary care provider or evaluated by You know, this is a pretty good graphic of all the symptoms. However, combinations of those symptoms can result in a lot of different things. Fever and diarrhea could be signs of E. coli. You know, fever, chills, sore throat could be strep throat, it could be flu. I mean, the only ones that are really particular to COVID is that new loss of taste or smell. And so it's really important that somebody is at least, starts with their primary care to be evaluated and make sure that they are not only being tested for the right things, but if that COVID test is negative, and then they need to be further evaluated or treated, that they are appropriately treated. Another option besides primary care, CVS has started a drive-through, and that's by appointment testing. Again, you have to be symptomatic, you have to fill out a screening, and that is the link there, and it'll also be in the slides, which will be posted to our, our website later on As a reminder, we will have the, the flu clinic next week, the October 14, at the 4H Building. This will be a drive-through clinic only for adults aged 19 and older. So please wear a short sleeve so that we can be able to, you know, easily get to your upper arm, have your insurance card with you. And if you have any questions prior to that, feel free to give us a call at the Health Department so we can make sure that you are ready and successful when you show up for the flu clinic. And so I can't stress enough that we continue the current recommendations. You know, wearing the mask, hand washing, social distancing, especially staying home when sick, are all proven effective measures in order to try and reduce the spread. And for us to go into, I think, any other further restrictions would not only be extremely difficult, but they would have to be very, very, I think, tight restrictions, like mask gathering levels of 10 if we had to go that route in order to really be effective. And this is going to be even more important as we go into the winter months, where people start taking their events and sports indoors. So they're really going to have to be paying attention to who's around them, making that assessment for themselves, too. If they go somewhere and they feel like that it's, it's too crowded, or they don't have enough space, or people, somebody around them is not wearing a mask, that they may have to move to a different part of the venue that they are at. I know, you know, just in conversation with the Tony's Pizza Event Center about a volleyball tournament that's at the end of the month, you know, they're really, you know, trying to make sure that all of those types of measures are in place, including capacity limits and stuff like that, so that there is plenty of room. But I don't see this getting any simpler, quite honestly, as we move into the winter months. With that, if there are questions?
Well, I'd like to make an observation, and that is that in light of everything that's going on, and, and the numbers and so forth, and it distresses me terribly when I drive by one of the local baseball parks this weekend and see a couple of thousand people down there that the only social distancing happened to be maybe some players that were 90 feet apart on the, on the, on the fields, and see all the diamonds, and the place was packed. I, it just, it just leaves me shaking my head. Why do we want to continue to do those types of things and put many, 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 many people at risk? So comments from anyone else?
A quick question, Jason.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned CVS is doing testing by appointment. These, these private entities that do testing, do, do all the testing results, do they have to report back to you?
They're, well, they're, they're supposed to be reported to KDHE. And so we will then get the positive results so that then we can be able to conduct investigation on those. But they are supposed to, through electronic lab reporting, report all that to KDHE so that they have all of that information.
Thank you.
As far as the resolution itself goes, I don't, I don't think we need a vote. I think we need a consensus of, of the commissioners that we need to continue with the mask. Is that appropriate, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, there is no action required until you wish to change something.
That having been said, then I would ask for a consensus from my fellow commissioners that we continue to, to run the mask mandate as, as, as outlined in Resolution 20-2297. Is that okay with everyone?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, we will continue with the mask mandate.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for the update, Jason. We'll move to item number two.
RFA 228-20, Saline County Coronavirus Relief Funds Emergency Operations Grant with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am here to request the acceptance of the Coronavirus Relief Rural Emergency Operations Center grant that the Kansas Division of Emergency Management has offered up to 103 counties, excluding, of course, Cedricton and Johnson County. I was awarded $4,893 to purchase six laptops for our EOC. Those laptops would essentially be able to be checked out of the Emergency Operations Center to ensure that we're all not sitting in the same room right now, and to allow some people to participate in Zoom meetings and web EOC that may not have the IT permissions to do so on their own networks. So those that could check this out would just be emergency support functions, so those that are essential to operations in the EOC that we don't want to risk not having in those meetings.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
One question, Michelle. Was this done through state purchase, or did you go to bids, or?
I have not done anything other than apply for the grant.
Okay, so there's no purchase taking place?
No.
Okay. Well, we probably have to vote to, to accept the, the grant, and then the, the bid process would start.
Right.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Not, I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the RFA 228-20, Saline County Coronavirus Funds Emergency Operations Grant.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 228-20, Saline County Coronavirus Relief Funds Emergency Operations Grant. Further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. We will move to item number three.
RFA 229-20, Emergency Performance Grant with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning again, Michelle.
Good morning. So this one, I am asking that we apply for the 2020 Emergency Management Performance Grant that will help enhance and sustain emergency management for Saline County. Saline County has participated in this grant for multiple years now, and it does require a 50-50 match, that we do use the current salaries of emergency management employees to cover that 50-50 match. So staff is recommending that we apply for this. We use this funding to support the deputy director position for emergency management.
And as I was listening and trying to read and find the page at the same time, so this is a matching grant that we have to match?
Correct. Yes.
The level? And again, tell me what the level was that we're asking for?
Last year, we were awarded $33,000. They are anticipating that it'll be the same amount this year. So that 50-50 match is covered between our emergency management staff, so my salary, and our administrator assistant.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners? Are any public comment? If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the EMP grant as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 229-20, Emergency Performance Grant. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. We will move to item number four. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
RFA 230-20, Purchase of Jail Cameras with Captain Stan Fruits from the Sheriff's
Good morning, Captain.
I am here to request the purchase of 17 jail cameras. These are to replace and add to our existing cameras in the functioning jails. These cameras are located...
Sorry. Our, in the old jail, the jail parking lot, the patrol parking lot, and the current cameras that we will be replacing are on analog. Our whole jail system is digital, so that would help us in the switch. The cameras that we currently have in the old jail are old, some are broken, and some are non-existent in the jail. So we had sent bids out, and three businesses responded. Wilson Security out of Salina with their bid of $33,575. INA Alert Incorporated out of Allenwood, Kansas for $22,463.50. Their, their bid did not meet spec, so it was rejected. C and C Group out of Wichita, their bid was $56,510, and it was over the TIP budget for this year. So staff is recommending purchasing the cameras from Wilson Security for $33,575, and this will be used out of the 2020 and this will be used out of the 2020 TIP, which we'd estimated the jail cameras cost to be at $40,000.
Captain, do we currently do a level of business with Wilson Security?
Yes. He's, has responded to our needs in adding cameras, especially when we were starting to have really a lot of issues with mental health inmates by installing cameras in the booking area. When we have issues with other cameras, he's always there when we call. And I know the police department, they use him, so he's pretty reliable, and pretty good at his business.
I did notice that the, I believe it was this weekend that there was a article in the paper regarding this business, and all favorable.
Yes.
So I guess a good part of that is that I see also is it's a local business, so we're being able to keep the money in Celine County.
That is correct.
If we head that direction. So, other comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for some sort of an action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of 17 cameras from Wilson Security for $33,575 with budgeted TIP funds.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 230-20, Purchase of Jail Cameras. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Captain.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number five.
RFA 231-20, Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant with Jamie Douth County Clerk. I am bringing before you today the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant approval. The Tech and Civic Life granted the Celine County Election Office $28,423.50 in grant funds to be exclusively used for the purpose of planning and operationalizing safe and secure election administration in Celine County in 2020. The grant period is from June 15, 2020, through December 31, 2020. The county councilor has reviewed and approved the alternatives for action. Accept the grant in the amount of $28,423.50 and sign the agreement, or do not accept the grant. Currently, I'm looking at using these funds for software and scanners to use to process our ballots that come back for signature verification, because the amount that we'll be getting back in our office, right now, I think we're about 7,500 that are going out. So the amount of time and staff that it would take to verify those signatures is significant. So I'm looking at using a scanner to try to do that signature verification for us to help alleviate some of that need for extra staff time, so.
The Center for Tech and Civic Life organization, is that a governmental, United States government organization, or what is that group?
They're a nonprofit group. I mean, they were formed, I don't know, I remember when they, I don't know, probably about 10 years ago, and they help with all different facets of government entities with elections, and website design, and just different types of bringing different organizations together on the election administration and helping with that. So they give classes on helping create some of your websites for like plain language and ADA. So that group kind of works with the AAC and election officials across the states.
So where do they get their funding from?
Actually, this grant money came from Mark Zuckerberg, and he gave, I believe, just off the top of my head, about $250 million for election officials across the United States for grant money to be used for the COVID response for elections.
Okay. Questions from commissioners, comments?
One question. You're going to use this money to buy software and some hardware?
I'm looking at utilizing that. It's scanners that will actually scan our envelope and match the signatures against our voter registration system of, to make sure that those match, because we have to do that on every ballot that comes back.
And even though this will expedite what you look to be a lot larger turnout of mail-in ballots, this can be used in the future also?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We'll continue to use it, and it actually can also be used on any form of the election administration that we do that we have barcodes on. So we have, like our voter registration cards, when they come back and we process them, we put a barcode on those. So we could also use it, because we have to scan those into our voter registration system, so we could also use it for that scanning. So it has multiple purposes throughout the office.
Other comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? If not, I would like a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the Center for Tech and Civic Life grant as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 231-20, Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response Grant. Is there any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. Item number six.
RFA 232-20, Resolution 20-2308, Appointment of Public Building Commission Members with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So this is a continuation of items that have been in front of your commission, I think, every week for the last month regarding our new public safety communication system and our plans to finance that. And last Tuesday, you adopted Resolution 20-2306, which created the Celine County Kansas Public Building Commission, as well as a companion resolution asking for that body to issue revenue bonds. Today, we need to actually make appointments to that Public Building Commission in order for them to meet and begin the process of issuing those bonds and creating a lease agreement with the county. Per the terms of the resolution that you adopted last week, each commissioner is asked to name one appointee to the Public Building Commission. That's a little bit different than the structure that we have for many of our other boards and commissions, so the resolution that's before you today has some blank lines on it. Each of the commissioners will appoint a member who will have a term that is coterminous with the term of the county commissioner who appoints them. And we have contacted a few folks who have expressed interest in volunteering for county boards and commissions in the past, just to gauge their interest, so we had a few names to offer up to commissioners. We are hoping to get this body appointed today so that they could meet by the end of next week. That allows the process to stay on the time schedule that was presented last Tuesday, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
This isn't a question, but it's a comment. The process, we're a little bit unusual here for us to appoint them individually, but I think that has come down from our bond counsel, is that correct, Gilmore?
Yeah, Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, prepared the draft resolution for us, and this is based on their experience around the state and what they think works particularly well for county commissions.
Normally, I would kind of be against this process, but doing it this way, but if that's coming from the people that run these kinds of things, then I'm okay with that. Are there any other comments before I ask for these? If not, the number one up is Commissioner in District One, is Marty Shadwick, and he is not here. I would suggest that we wait just to go through the process and then come back to Marty and appoint someone as a group there. The second one up is District Two, Robert Vidrickson, and I hereby nominate Andrew Manley to serve on this important board. Commissioner Roger Sparks is District Three, and Roger, do you have a name?
I'd like to recommend Rita Deister as a member of the public commission.
Okay, and District Number Four, which is James L. Weiss?
I would like to nominate Calvin Kelsey.
All right. Commissioner Michael White in District Five?
And I have a question. The people that have filled out their expression of interest forms, could you read the names? Do you have that?
Oh, we have Jim Norton, Michelle Dolan, Rita Deister, Andrew Manley, and Calvin Kelsey, and there was one other gentleman who we'd contacted, and he was sort of still deciding, I didn't receive an application from him yet, so.
I might add that I think, Mike, I mean, if this is of interest to you, that it doesn't necessarily have to be someone that's expressed an interest form. If you have somebody that you think could be a good addition to this, I would suggest that you nominate them, even though they haven't necessarily filled out an expression of interest.
Okay, I appreciate that. I honestly spent a lot of time on this, and I can't find up, come up with any good viable names that would like to serve on this committee.
And that puts us at an impasse of sorts, or?
Well, three people is a quorum for a body of five, so if the commission wishes to pass the resolution today with the names of Andrew Manley, Rita Deister, and Calvin Kelsey, that group can go ahead and meet and get the process started, and then we can bring the resolution back later for Commissioner Shadwick and Commissioner White's names as well.
Okay, I kind of like that idea, to be able to hold off just a little bit. We have nominated the three, and that constitutes a quorum there with that group also, and meanwhile, we can contact Commissioner Shadwick and see where he stands on this, and give Commissioner White time to perhaps seek out some other names if he so desires, or to nominate Mr. Norton or Mrs. Dolan. So, okay, so we can head that direction? Does that make it, as far as, are we complete with the item? I mean, do we need to take a vote now?
Public comment, and then if we would have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution with those names.
Okay, okay. I will first go with the public comment portion of it. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this? If not, we'll bring it back for a vote on the three people that have been nominated, that being Andrew Manley, Rita Deister, and Calvin Kelsey. So if someone would like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint a public building commission members as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 230-20, Resolution 20-2308, Appointment of Public Building Commission Members, and those members are Andrew Manley, Calvin Kelsey, and Rita Deister to the Public Building Commission. Any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion does carry, four to zero. That takes us to the end of today's action items. We will move into informational items. Item number one.
County Administrator's Update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Okay, Philip.
Good morning again. So just a few things to update the commission on. First, wanted to follow up on a conversation that we had previously regarding recruitment for the Expo Center Director. As the commission is aware, Rick Lemer has decided that he wants to leave us in the middle of March next year, and so we did meet with Rick, Marilyn Lemer, HR Director, and I met with Rick, as directed by the commission, and we are looking at starting a recruitment at the end of November, November 30th, would just be sort of a local recruitment. We're hoping to do interviews on the Fourth of January, bring a recommendation to the commission the following week, which would be January 12th, so that somebody could potentially start in February and have some overlap with Rick until he leaves in March. So that is our game plan on that. The second item to update the commission on is just that we have received a request from OCCK for their letter of support for their grant from the Kansas Department of Transportation, so that letter is included in the packet. We'll be asking the chair to sign that, just wanted to make the commission aware of that. Speaking of things for the commission to sign, tomorrow is our first report due to the State of Kansas Office of Recovery on use of the Coronavirus Relief Funding through September 30th, and so Nancy Basset in our office and Kathy Brockway, our contractor, are working diligently on that this morning, and have coordinated with the chair to make sure that we can sign that and get that sent off tomorrow. And then finally, I will just turn this over to Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stambaugh to discuss, but as the commission knows, we, in addition to the Coronavirus Relief Funding and some of the private efforts in the community, we also applied for Community Development Block Grant funding, and had a little bit of a hiccup, but were eventually successful in being awarded funds for that to benefit local businesses. And we have a really nice problem, which is that we have more people who have applied and are eligible than we have funding to go around. So I think we'd like some committee folks to help us out with that. So Hannah?
Yeah, just as Philip stated, it's a good problem to have, in the aspect of having more applications than we have funding. So we were awarded a total of $132,000 with the Community Development Block Grant specifically related to COVID. $12,000 of that will be done, or will be used for administration costs of the North Central Regional Planning Commission, so we have roughly about $120,000 that can be debited between businesses in the county that have applied. So myself and Carol Torkelson with the North Central Planning Commission have received all the applications. We have gone through and done some prequalifications, making sure that they actually do meet the federal guidance that's necessary to be considered to be, to move on. So at this point, obviously with having more applications than funds, I would like to have some assistance with either going through these applications and making some recommendations. Carol has told me that there's, she's seen it done several different ways in different communities. Some communities have decided to award funds based on the number of jobs retained, some have just taken the pot and divided it between all the businesses. She said there's several ways of doing it, so I think that's a good opportunity for a small committee or some assistance with helping me go through some of these grants and the applications, and try to make a best recommendation to move forward.
And what's the deadline on that?
So these grant funds don't have to be spent until 2021, so we have a little bit of time. However, obviously, all of these businesses have submitted costs and that have been incurred basically since probably about the March-April timeframe. We also have a couple businesses, too, that we're seeking some funds to actually kind of start up, well, not really start up, but to continue their operations, being that their business really heavily is active during the holiday season. So I think that the faster that we can kind of get this money out the door, the faster we can really help some of these businesses that have been struggling for the past couple of months.
I'd like to have you perhaps get that down in writing a little bit, some options that are available to us, and outline the timeframe, and if we can get that fairly quickly, then we can act fairly quickly also. And rather than just here, come out of the microphone, I'd like to look at it on a hard copy, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if we can do that. So, if we can do that, expedite that portion of it, while I think we can get the, get the ball rolling. Thank you. Is that, uh, pretty much the size of that one? We'll move to, uh, item number two, which is Commissioners' com, whoops, excuse me, Jamie, I'm just walking on your toes there. Uh, Commissioners' Comments. Anyone have anything? Item number three, which is the announcements.
Just, uh, just, just a reminder that, uh, there will not be a commission meeting next Tuesday, so.
And that has to do with originally, uh, the, the KAC Annual Meeting?
Yeah, originally, that was canceled because of the KAC Annual Meeting. The KAC Annual Meeting is, uh, has, um, changed in scope, shall we say? So there's really only one, uh, meeting on Tuesday that conflicts, but, uh, you know, with, I, I don't think there's any pressing business that would require us to reschedule that for next Tuesday, so I think we're good for continuing that cancellation.
Okay.
And I also, I also have an announcement, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, we have, uh, voter registration actually ends, um, October thirteenth, and we are doing late night voter registration, um, Thursday, Friday, and then again on Tuesday till eight o'clock. So, if, uh, you haven't updated your voter registration, you might want to check that out. Um, there's a link on our Elections Department on our website. Um, check that out, and then come to our office and update your registration.
In, in-person, uh, advanced voting starts?
October nineteenth.
October nineteenth.
And if people requested, uh, to receive a ballot in the mail, I know a lot of people are asking about that, those are not allowed to go out until October fourteenth. So we'll be taking those to the post office that day.
You know, I, all the negative stuff that we're hearing about the camp, the, uh, the elections and everything this year, uh, it has, throughout time, Saline County has traditionally been able to say, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, our votes are counted. Do you anticipate that being different this year?
No.
Good.
We, uh, I made changes in the primary, um, and we have processes in place that help us get that done, um, by that, roughly that same time. The only thing that might hold us up is if there's lines at seven o'clock at polling places and getting, um, those, um, ballots back into our office. Uh, might make it a little bit later, but, um, we're, um, we have plans in place to hopefully have that same timeline, so.
Well, that sounds, uh, music to my ears, anyway, so. All right, we will move to, it appears that we have an executive session.
Yes, I'd like to request an executive session, uh, for about ten minutes for, under the, um, personnel, uh, exception for matters of non-elected personnel to review a department head evaluation.
Second motion. Okay, you want to make the motion?
Okay.
You want to make?
Hey, I'll just make the motion.
Okay, you're, and the second will come from?
Mr.
Okay, we've been moved, second, that we move into executive session, uh, for the purpose of, uh, non-elected personnel, uh, for ten minutes. We'll reconvene in here according to the clock on the wall at, uh, ten AM. So, all of those in favor of the motion to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, we're in executive session.